Okay, hey, everybody, we are live streaming here on Facebook and on YouTube. And I'm really pleased to have as my guest this afternoon Poway City Council candidate Frank Fournier. How you doing Frank?
Good, how are you doing?
So, um, you know, we, we tried to do this once before I had a technical breakdown. So thanks for your flexibility and rescheduling and getting this organized with me. So, um, just really happy we have an opportunity to talk to you. I think there's a lot of people here in the city of Poway that would like to learn more about Frank Fournier. So maybe just to get a kick it off here, give us a thumbnail sketch of who you are and why you're running for Poway City Council.
Sure, yeah, um, you know, my, uh, my father is a former federal agent. And so we traveled a lot because of his job, but we finally settled in Poway just in time for six straight. And then I've been here ever since, um, graduated from Poway High School and came back and lived here during college as well. I went to San Diego State, got a degree in molecular biology and started working in medical research and immunology. And I came back and I helped a few different families set up the Poway High School Rugby Program. So I started coaching and then I finally took over as the head coach and did that for quite some time, which was a lot of fun. I'm very jealous too, because when I was at Poway High, we didn't have a rugby program. So I was playing rugby in a, in a club that had a few different cities all feeding into one club. Um, and then just most recently I had a job training in Tokyo. I moved into management, so I was back and forth Tokyo to, to, to Poway. Um, and that's probably one of the reasons that in addition to making the Lebanese National Rugby Team is why I stepped down from coaching Power High School Rugby, but, um, I continued to work in medical research and really all my paid time off would go to traveling and playing in various countries for Lebanon, from Uzbekistan to, uh, United Arab Emirates to, you know, depends on where we were playing. So that was pretty fun. So I didn't have that very much, uh, very many vacations, including Christmas, but it was fun having two jobs, being international rugby player and working in medical research at the same time. And, and that's kind of where it comes back to, to now is I, I think that throughout my life, I've always wanted to give back to the community. Uh, I think it's part of being a part of a diplomat family and moving around a lot as a kid and living in Africa and in Honduras and in Belgium and, and learning under and learning and understanding other cultures and how to, um, interact with them. And, uh, and not only interact with them, but kind of come to win-win solutions. And, uh, and I do that now in my day-to-day job. I'm a, I, I, I do a lot of conflict resolution and negotiations and my job is to create alliances between pharmaceutical companies and academia or one or the other, uh, in order to set up these, these big collaborations to discover drugs or vaccines. So it's what I do in a daily job and I thought I could do, uh, that same sort of thing within the council and, and give back to my local community. Because, you know, I just got recently engaged and I want to be, uh, very active, thank you, very active in my community. I know I want my kids to go to Power High and, and Twin Peaks, exactly what I did. I had a huge benefit for it and I think it's good for my kids. And so I want to be very hands-on in, in the community. And that's sort of where I came around this council member idea. I'm already pretty active in politics. I think, uh, politics is politics. It affects your life and, uh, if you're not voting, if you're not paying attention, then, you know, sooner rather than later, you could be living in a, in a country that you, you don't recognize. So I think that's why I'm, I'm doing this, this council member thing. And, you know, I think people may misunderstand the, the role of council member in a sense, but, you know, like I've mentioned before, the hard reality is that we're oversight on the city manager and attorney. And so our job is to go out and get public opinion and take the majority and sort of go with that. And even as a council member, you may disagree with the majority, but that's not your job. Your job is to take public opinion and have oversight on the city manager and attorney and do what's best for, for the city. Um, and that's where conflict resolution comes into play because you have to work with other council members to get a vote. You, you can't do it on your own.
Wow, I mean, so you've already given back to the community as a, as a rugby coach and now looking to get onto the city council. So is there like a, a big issue here in Poway that's, that maybe drove you to run that, that's really lighting your fire? The, a, a big problem you want to solve here in town?
I mean, I don't know if it's, um, it may be a big problem for me, but not necessarily everybody else. But, you know, I've been giving back, joining other clubs in and around Poway from, um, Kiwanis or Rotary or, you know, I, I go down with my dad to the, uh, uh, Veterans of Foreign Wars. It's sort of down off Pomerato, old, old, uh, Pomerato Road. And what I've noticed just from when I was a kid and, and now is that the amount of traffic on Power Road is, is quadrupled at least. Um, and it's, it's starting to, to change in a direction that I'm not sure where our city is going. Um, I'm not sure what the 20-year future plan is for Poway, but, um, it, it's starting to, to worry me a bit. I'm not necessarily against development, but I think the right type of development is needed. And, uh, I'm not sure that's where we're going. I feel like we are, are developing when we, we not, we don't really necessarily need to. Um, we have affordable housing projects that we're doing and, and, you know, council meeting where the council wants to put even more. Uh, there's three sites that are housing and they want to fill those sites up. But I'm not necessarily sure that how developments are what we need to fill those spots in. I mean, we could do parks, we could do other things. Why is it just housing projects or developments? And, um, I think the ratio to amenities and houses should balance out. Um, you know, if, if anyone's ever driven to or, or fall, their downtown area is pretty nice. All these small mom and pop restaurants and stores and, uh, on Saturday or Sunday, I forgot which day they're doing it now. They, they close off the street and all the restaurants have their, uh, their tables out in the middle of the road and you can walk through it and shop and eat. And, uh, and that's sort of a local feel. It's sort of what I thought Poway wants. Uh, but it'd be interesting to continue to go out and talk to people and members of the city and see what everyone else is looking for. Uh, you know, so I've been actively walking around town, knocking door to door, old school, and, uh, getting people's opinions on where do they want to see Poway in 20 years? Cause it may be different than where, where I want it to be.
Well, what are some of the things you're hearing from Poway residents as you're outdoor knocking? What are the issues that are driving them?
It's, it's such a wide range. That's probably the most surprising thing. But, you know, you have people that are actively upset about a very topic, uh, that may, you know, a small topic to others, but big for them, which is, uh, the light pollution up in Scripps-Poway Parkway and coming down into South Poway. Topic for a few people, uh, but I think the majority are worried about the level of traffic on Power Road and the level of development in South Poway as compared to other districts. Um, I did have a, a few people, or more than a few people, uh, confused about the district system. They, they didn't even know we were districts. And so I talked to them about this, uh, district idea and, and format. Um, but I think most, at least South Power residents were, uh, perturbed about the amount of traffic on Power Road. Um, even when the, uh, when the construction is being done, uh, they were a little bit worried that it was going off, you know, down around two and two to five PM where kids are out after school. They were a little bit worried about that, um, you know, in addition to just the development itself. And then, you know, other people in other districts, one of the things that they were talking about is the district system and being a little bit confused about it.
Well, I do want to get into the district system because I know you've made a point of that on your website and in some videos. But let's set that aside just temporarily, because I want to still go down this path about development on Poway Road and in other parts of, of the city. So, you know, they're obviously the outpost, you know, they're digging the big hole there and they're working on that underground parking structure. And a lot of times that two lanes on Poway Road gets reduced to one, which is trouble. Uh, but there's now more development on Poway Road, you know, out by the library with a community center. There's putting in a lot more housing and there's more that's coming, you know, between community and, um, um, and Carriage Road. Like the, the bowling alley and the thrift stores are most likely that property is going to be sold and developed on. So walk me through this, like, as if you were on the city council, what action would you like to take? What action is possible to take? And if you were to wave a magic wand, what would Poway Road look like?
I mean, that's, that's the hard thing as a council member is, you know, especially in this district system. I mean, you, you, you need to work with other council members in order to come to a resolution. So if all the other council members are against you on something, I mean, you need to do your due diligence to sort of win them into your, uh, into what you're pushing for, um, by going out there and getting the, the public's opinion on whatever topic that you're pushing. Uh, but if I had a magic wand, I, I would have done Poway Road a little bit differently. It is sad to see, uh, you know, the, the bowling alley and, and Jimmy Z and all these other places go under. I mean, maybe it was because of COVID, maybe it was just previous to that, but I am worried to see all of that. You know, starting to turn into an overdeveloped area where you're having, you know, a lot of apartment complexes all sort of within South Poway. Um, if it was me, I'd like to see something more akin to what we see in Old Poway Park. Um, I really like that area. It's really nice to walk through. Um, I really like, uh, um, Smoke and Jay's barbecue and, and the hamburger factory and, and, uh, just the way it looks over there. I mean, it's nice. Um, I always see kids ride around there and there's a, there's a nice school over there. It'd be cool to have another park in that area, but you know, that you have a park, a really massive one on the back of Hamburg Factory. And, and that's sort of what I, I mean by ratio of amenities to housing. Um, cause that, you know, they did build some apartments and, and condos behind, um, Old Poway Park. Um, but you don't necessarily feel them as much as compared to what they're doing on Power Road. Um, so if I had a magic wand, I would, I would do a similar style along that road and probably less, uh, of the, the big developments and more, uh, shopping centers, put local power restaurants, parks that, that kind of intertwine between the restaurants and, and the, uh, and the just typical shops where people in Poway can walk on a Saturday or Friday night, a Sunday, start attracting more, you know, 30 to 50 year olds, um, you know, in that range, 20 to 30. I, I'd like to see more of that. Um, I'd like to, to see, uh, the business park in Poway be attracting more, um, you know, pharmaceutical companies or things like that where your, your medium income is a little bit higher and people can work out there. Um, I, I was a little confused about the penitentiary or whatever that thing is called that people like to call. I, I don't understand that as compared to bringing in businesses and local jobs that people can go over there, work, come and live in Poway and actually afford it because of the jobs that they're getting. Um, and then on a Friday or on a Saturday, they can walk their kids through shopping centers and, and go to, uh, a shop that is a, a local Poway restaurant. Um, I mean, that's what I would like to see. I'd like to see it become local and really stick with that motto, which is, you know, the city and the country. But if you're, the more and more you drive through South Poway, it's, it's harder and harder to see the country aspect of it. Um, and that was something that I thought we proud, uh, we kind of, we kind of pride ourselves in Poway is a dedicated open space and that we had a lot of it.
Yeah, it's interesting because some people have the misguided notion that the city council is making the final decision on everything. Cause it's, it's private property and the property owners are choosing to develop. Um, the city council has some form of, um, how should I say, some form of approval on the permitting process and of the drawings and the architectural plans, but, but ultimately it's not the city's property. It's a private property owner. So it's tricky to have a well-planned city, but at the same time, respect the rights of private property owners. Yeah, it's, it's going to be interesting to see how this evolves. Once we get beyond the current construction, once we get, you know, up near Jimmy Z and the bowling alley, we're going to see a lot of changes over the next few years.
No, definitely. I mean, what, what do you think? I mean, how, if you had a magic wand, what would you do in that area?
Well, I'm, I'm definitely much more of a free market guy and much more of a property rights guy. So I'm, I'm, and I'm also personally, I'm big on trying to help resolve the housing crisis in San Diego County. So I'm generally pro-development for those reasons. But, you know, I don't live on Poway Road. I live in North Poway, but I did live 11 years on Garden Road. Um, so I have a good sense of understanding, you know, what is important in that community. So, um, yeah, uh, it'll be interesting to see how it go, how this further develops. And, you know, even here in Poway, there's a potential project that's on the ballot, um, for the farm.
Yeah, so farm. I mean, those are the same guys that did Old Poway Park. So, um, you know, if, if their, their previous works are any indication that that farm will be, I mean, it, it could be pretty nice. Um, I, I've talked to them a few times. I mean, they're always pretty open and cordial. So if anyone's out there and confused about what their, their aim is, I would suggest giving them a call and just talking directly to them. They're, they're pretty open about it. Um, it is nice to see that area getting developed. Um, in the sense of having a, uh, an open area where people can walk through, sort of like it was before. I remember going to the jacuzzi there in high school and, uh, and, uh, you know, playing golf over there. But, yeah, I mean, I, I think that having some development products, projects like that in North Poway uh, is nice to sort of keep it even. Uh, last night in the city council, they were talking about, um, something kind of in that area, uh, more off, uh, off Pomerato, but having an affordable housing development over there near the hospital and your public transit. And, uh, you know, I, I think that as a development idea, that could be beneficial, especially for veterans, uh, especially being so near a hospital if they need it, uh, or if any disabled members of the community are living in that, in that, uh, in that area. I, I think that could be nice. I think one of the critiques we see in South Poway is just the level of development that seems to be, uh, only in the South Poway or on Power Road and, and all the way to the, to the highway. Uh, and it'd be nice to just even it out a little bit, uh, so that all the traffic isn't just right here. You know, right where the movie theater is on that corner where everyone has their signs, depending on what political party they're, they're promoting. Um, you know, there's just a lot of things happening on that intersection and we can even it out a little bit. Um, but yeah, I just like to see, um, I, I think that you're right. I think as a city council member, um, you can't really force or, or, you know, manhandle these private enterprises and what they want to do with their own property, but you can influence them. Uh, you can, uh, ask for certain proposals to be done and, and you can do it that way. And I think that's why, uh, you know, my background in conflict resolution may help because I'm sure they're not going to be too excited to have someone tell them what they want to do in their, in their private property. Um, but, and, and I won't, I, I'm just going to, you know, use some Jedi mind tricks to try to get them to do what, what the city wants them to do, as in the public, not the council.
Well, you know, you mentioned earlier in the, in our discussion, the VFW out on Old Pomerato. And, you know, let's, that's kind of a nice way to tee up this, um, Big Stone Lodge. And, um, kind of interested in your opinion on that, not because there's a number of ways this could go, right? That some people want to restore the Big Stone Lodge, some people want to commemorate the Big Stone Lodge. Some people want to keep it a park. Other people want to develop housing. What is your view on what should be done at that site?
I mean, I'd still want to get more and more opinions out there and continue to get what the public wants to do versus my own opinion. But if I had to say my own, I'd like to, like, see it stay the way it is or, or except the park renovated a bit. So it does look nicer or, you know, so it's not falling apart if it is. Um, but it is, yeah. So I, I'd like to put in some money to renovate it. But, you know, there's other cities within California, um, that have attracted tourism by promoting local historical structures or ideas. And, and, you know, Poway can, can do the same. You know, there's not very many people that travel to Poway to see, uh, one thing or another. No, no one's coming to Old Poway Park really to, to just see the Old Poway Park. But we can convert our city so that local businesses, especially restaurants, are having this influx of outsiders coming in to see Poway and then go to a local restaurant versus putting a, a two to three story apartment complex, um, in that area. Um, but I do want to say that VFW is great. On Fridays they do cheeseburgers and I highly suggest people going over there. You'll get some amazing stories from our veterans. Um, you know, they, they have some amazing stories and, and, and some, uh, lessons that I think, um, current men and even women would, would benefit a lot from listening to.
Well, you know, um, well, yeah, I a hundred percent with you on VFW. In fact, John Carson is one of my guests here on the podcast, posts about them regularly promoting their cheeseburgers on Fridays. Nice. But, yeah, here, uh, one of our, uh, one of our viewers just, you know, shared this comment with you. And she first of all said, uh, this is from Rebecca Lindsay. Cities everywhere are adopting housing models storefronts on bottom level with the two to three levels above for housing. Personally not crazy about it. Not sure it's best for Poway and the city and the country may need a new motto soon.
Yeah, I agree with that. I said that in the, well, in the, the relegating the, uh, the motto to history. I said that in the council last night is that, you know, if, before we know it, I mean, that motto will be just a historical term for us. I mean, we're, we're quickly become very little in, in the sense of country. Um, I, I do think that, you know, in, in that, the outpost idea, I do like that they did parking underground, uh, just to save on space. But that's probably, you know, the only thing I like about that whole idea, to be completely honest with you. Um, I, I also thought that, that it was kind of silly that they, they were so shocked they hit water there. I, I thought that was a little bit strange. I think that, that should have been thought through ahead of time. Um, and, and, you know, she's right. I mean, uh, uh, the, the new model seems to be storefronts on that bottom level, sort of what we see in like Little Italy or, or North Park even. And then that top level being housing, I even see it kind of going down in Clermont Mesa, but that isn't Poway. Um, but, you know, I may be in the minority. I mean, I think that's part of, uh, the purpose of being council members is if you go out into the public, we sort of get a gist of what everyone's thinking. And if everyone is wanting to transition away from our, our current motto and be more like Clermont Mesa or whichever, you know, maybe that's where we, where we go. But as far as I can tell from everyone I've talked to is we still want to be the city in the country. And, uh, I think we need to develop a 20 to 30-year plan that, that keeps that motto away from being a historical motto. Keep it in the present, uh, and, and we can do it while still, um, compromising on some development projects, uh, depending on what they are. Um, but like you said, I think we're going to have to really wait and see, uh, how Poway Road looks after all these development projects got, got, uh, pushed through. And I think that's probably my own, the, my only critique of the city council is that I, I don't really see any arguments or debates in the meetings. Uh, they all seem so, you know, uh, I guess complicit with each other. I mean, and they're so happy. Everyone just agrees, vote unanimous, boom, down, next development. And it's so quick. Uh, and I'd like to see more arguments. I'd like to see a little bit more fire. I mean, uh, especially since the community has a lot of intense opinions about how much development should be happening in Poway, especially South Poway.
Yeah. I mean, I think vigorous debate is always good, um, even if it's just presenting a devil's advocate.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, so I, I'm with you on that for sure. Um, let's bounce around here as a few other topics. Let's talk about the district issue. Um, you know, Poway recently switched to four districts rather than voting at large. I know it, it sounds like you want to go back to the at-large system. So share with me your thoughts on the district voting system and, and what you think the pros and cons of it are.
You know, I don't necessarily want to go back to the at-large elections, but I did want to be a devil's advocate and really talk through this whole idea, um, you know, because there, there has been a historical issue with South Power being underrepresented on the council. And so this district system does give us a representative that will be only in South or from South Poway. But the problem is that, um, you only get to vote for that person, yet that person needs to work with everybody else in order to make a decision and you have no say in those council members. So if there's three other council members that are completely opposite of your district council member, uh, you will constantly lose out and, and continue to lose out. And so that historical problem with underrepresentation in Poway and South Poway, excuse me, uh, will continue. Uh, and sort of, and that, that's kind of what I was, I was trying to get at is maybe the district system isn't the best idea in solving the under-representation of South Poway. Maybe there's better ways to do it and continue to strengthen our vote. Now, as a Poway citizen, you and I, uh, we only have a choice now in our own district council member. And so in a way, our, our voting power has been, uh, has been limited. And, and I'm not sure that, that was the, the best idea. I'm just not sure. I'd like to see more of a debate on the pros and cons and have our city fight for, uh, our voting power if necessary. You know, other cities like Santa Monica, they're in a similar position. Uh, they have 90,000 people in their cities, a little bit bigger. Uh, you know, they fought and, uh, they, they, they won an appeals court decision and they're continuing to fight to regain that, those at-large elections. Now, I'm not saying maybe we shouldn't do that. I mean, it's going to cost a good amount of money. Uh, but I'd just like to see more of a debate and that's sort of what I see, uh, as a problem on the national level with our, uh, our politics is this, um, this idea where we're not solving social issues. It's not, you know, me and you, John, trying to solve X social issue. It's that you're good, I'm evil, or I'm evil and you're good, whichever. And we're arguing and fighting and we never actually solve the solution or, uh, sorry, the problem. And so our eyes are off the ball and, uh, I'd, I'd like to be a part of the, the new generation of politicians, uh, even though I don't want to be a politician, but you know, new generation of Poway politics where we get away from that idea and we go back to here's the problem, let's solve it together and get the best solutions in the most efficient way.
Well, I think, isn't that a headline on your webpage, keeping politics out of Poway? Is, is that what you were meaning?
That's what I mean. I mean, I, I think I, like I said, I, I see that on the, on the national level. And I even see it in Poway, which was probably the most shocking thing about running for city council is I see a lot of toxic behavior even within the politics of Poway. Uh, and I just think it's unnecessary. It's unnecessary. It's inappropriate, especially as adults. Uh, and I think that we need to work together in order to solve problems versus go after each other for this perceived good versus evil, uh, uh, argument. And, you know, I think, I think we were talking about this before, but my hypothesis is that, uh, in, in our current society is that we, we believe that we already have discovered the truth. Yet this truth is, uh, we're always reaching for, we're always searching for, that's the, the, the hard reality of that. Um, and if you are always searching for the truth, then you'd want to sit down and discuss and debate so that you can consistently and constantly learn. But if you've already discovered the truth, why sit down? Why even discuss? Why talk? I mean, you are the truth. You know the truth. You are good. They are obviously wrong. And so you can just attack them for it. And I, and I think this is a dangerous way or a dangerous thing within our current, uh, society, especially within politics. We need to sit down, we need to have discourse and, uh, and continue to learn as truth seekers.
Yeah, I think that's a good perspective. Um, you know, we, we tend to get very tribal, right? Where we're part of this political party or part of this group or part of this, however you want to slice and dice society. Um, and sometimes it's good to break those down and just really focus on problem solving um, rather than immediately categorizing the other side. Yeah. Framing them, you know, according to your political agenda.
No, exactly. Yeah, no, exactly. Like the other day when, uh, we were having, um, you know, technical problems with, with this podcast. You know, instead of us sitting down and trying to solve this, the, the problem, which is these technical problems, I could have just started attacking you. How, how dare you do this on my day and, and you could, yeah. And you could do the opposite, you know, it's, it's your fault, Frank. I mean, you have a terrible computer and you're making me look bad. But no, we sat down and we, we had a very fun discussion about technology and
we did, we did.
Rescheduled and that was the solution to the problem.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll just to be very candid with you and with the audiences. Um, you know, we had the, the scheduled podcast like a week and a half ago. I was having technical trouble because I was on wifi and I upgraded my camera. And it's like sending so much data through the pipe that I think it kind of choked the, um, the bandwidth. Well, anyways, we canceled it and then I, there were a number of people that really wanted to meet you, you know, and see you on this podcast. And when I canceled it, there were some people that thought that there was an evil conspiracy, um, going on that. He must have backed out because of this or that. And so, yeah, there's, there's some of that even here in Poway where, you know, there's, there are people have political perspectives. They see things through political lenses. It's the reality, even though it is a nonpartisan race, it, it can be very partisan.
Yeah, no, definitely. That's a, a great analysis.
Um, here, here's a question that, um, was served up and this is a, this is a pretty pointed question, but I'll, I'll share it with you. And, um, this was from Paul Trevino and he's a, one of the frequent commenters on South and Poway, South and North Poway Votes. And he said, um, question you want me to pose was you and Chris Olps are both running against the incumbent. You know, of course, that's Kaylin Frank. Um, I have seen Chris's good work here for a long time, less so of you. Would you consider dropping out rather than splitting an anti-incumbent vote? Now, it's a pretty brutal question, but I, I want to be candid. I know that was something that some of the, the voters, um, are interested in learning more about you and, you know, the potential of, of, uh, splitting an anti-incumbent vote.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good question, but, you know, Yeah, no, I think it's a good question. But, you know, the same question could be asked to Chris Olps, you know, would you be considering stepping down so that you don't split the vote? So you know, I always question where these, where these people are coming from on that and who they're tied to. But yeah, I mean, I think that there is always a chance of splitting a vote, let's say for, for Kalen Frank, or there's no chance at all. And people are going to vote who they think is the best candidate. But I think as an American, everyone has the right to run for city council and I, and I highly suggest everyone does so or whoever wants to. It's a great experience, especially learning the ins and outs of Poway politics. But you know, this, this man has obviously seen things that Chris has been doing around the community. And maybe that's because it's, it's specific to wherever he lives or the subsects of community members, like if, if, you know, Chris has children and they're going to a certain school and this, this man's kids also goes to the school, he'll see something and he may not interact with me because I'm at Poway High School coaching older kids, or he's not joining the Poway Kiwanis meetings and doesn't see me there. Didn't donate blood the other day and didn't see me volunteering my time there. So I, I think that when it comes to volunteer work in Poway, I do think it is separate than being a council member. I don't see the correlation between you volunteer your time at X or Z in Poway, and that means you are going to be a good council member. I think that a bigger thing would be what is the purpose and the job description of a council member? And that is, like I said, getting public opinion and learning how to negotiate, especially in a toxic environment where you may be alone against other council members. And that would be what I would suggest everyone voting right now is, do you think that the other candidates are going to be able to negotiate their way and convince other council members to work with them on whatever idea? Or, you know, or not. And I can tell you that I will, I can work with the other council members. And I can get them to do one thing or another, depending on how good it is for, for Poway. Or I'll do my best to do that. And I think most council members, and that's another thing too, is that my question to this man would be, I would suggest you ask that same question to Chris and see what he says. You know, Chris has run a few times now, and I think that he hasn't won yet. And so I, I think it comes down to a question that you may want to ask yourself is when do you decide to become an advisor versus just continue to run? But I do think that running over and over again is also great, too. I think that Chris has a great perspective on things. He's, he's a very smart guy. But I don't want to get too much into the nitty gritty of his platform versus mine. I think he does a great job explaining his platform. And I highly suggest people going to his website and just calling him. He's, he's very accessible. I'll tell you that. Always available for coffee. And I am too. I live in Poway and, you know, me and him are very similar, but we're also different. The differences come mostly in personality and job description. Like I said, I'm a conflict resolution. I have a conflict resolution expertise and I'm in business. I have a small business, but I also work for a business. And I'm very accustomed to working with people, especially people of different cultures and and rights. And I think that's the biggest difference. But would I consider dropping out because of a perceived split vote? Probably not. I don't, I don't think that me and Chris running are going to spit, split a vote against Kalen Frank. It would just mean that me or Chris weren't good enough to beat Kalen Frank.
Well, on your website, by the way, one of the, you know, headlines you have is local officials over appointed out of towners. And I think I know who you're talking about, but you know, expand on that, please.
Yeah, I mean, there was an appointment of Kalen Frank and then later she was voted in. But everyone knows that incumbents have a have a handicap when, when it comes to voting. They always seem to win. And so appointing her was really the big thing. And I'm not necessarily saying Kalen Frank is a bad person because she's not. I think she's a great person. But one thing is that Poway wants and needs local Powegians to be running for city council. You know, she's made it somewhat clear, you know, not directly, but that she is trying to move up in the political ladder and she wants to move on to bigger things. And that's not what I'm trying to do at all. I'm not a politician and I never will be. I have a job and I'm, I'm quite happy with it. And I've been pretty open about this, but my part-time salary that the city wants to give me for council is going to be donated back right back into the city, either at the Poway High School Rugby Program, because it's very dear to my heart, or other programs. And I'm not going to take a single dollar from them. I'm just going to donate it completely back. I obviously have to accept it, but I'm going to give it back. That's my aim. I'm not a politician. And I think that Poway needs more non-politicians running for city council and people that grew up in Poway, you know? I don't, I don't think that you have to be here 30 years to be the best council member. You could be here 10 years, five years, a few years. But a few months, I don't think cuts it. And even if you never lived in Poway, I don't think that cuts it either. I think you'd need to be from Poway, at least graduate from Poway High School, at least know what it means to walk to the taco shop, go to the barn. You know, be as happy with the, the new In-N-Out, so you don't have to go to Carmont anymore. You know, I think you need to, you need to have certain experiences in Poway to sort of get the idea of what's best for Poway. And that's what I, what I mean by that. I don't really mean that as an attack against Kalen Frank, because like I said, I, I think she's a great person. And I think that deep down, she also wants the best for Poway, even if she may not necessarily be from Poway.
Yeah, I think that, that was an interesting appointment when she was made, because no, no one really knew who she was. But I had an opportunity to interview her in the 2018 cycle. And yeah, you're right. She's a very nice person. And, you know, and she's becoming more and more acclimated in the, in the community. But as an incumbent, she'll have an advantage. And that's, that's naturally true in any election. The incumbents always have an upper hand. So that's what's going to make your race really fascinating for, for me and many others to watch, to see how it plays out as a three, as a three-way.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if like, if we look at the votes and let's say Kalen Frank gets 6,000 and I get one and Chris gets two, we're not really splitting the vote. We, we just both would have lost, even if you took all my thousand votes and put it on Chris, I mean, Kalen still won. So I, I think those questions, those questions can be disingenuous. I think the better thing to be is just get the ideas of what the candidate is running on and either vote for them or not. But to go after certain candidates with loaded questions is strange. And I think it's unnecessary in, in Poway, especially when Chris and I are both of Poway. We both graduated Poway High School. We've both been here quite some time. We probably even share some friends, even though he's a bit older than me.
That's right. Yeah, Chris's roots go back quite a ways here in Poway as well.
Yeah, very far.
It's just some of the comments that are coming in. By the way, this is a live stream and we encourage listeners and viewers to share their comments and questions. But John Carson said, he goes, I'm an officer, the VFW and volunteer bartender. I'm there a lot. I haven't seen you there, Frank. Please come out sometime. So get to know John. He's a good guy.
Yeah, no, I will. Yeah, we've been there a few times, me and my dad. I mean, he may not have maybe recognized me with my, with my mask on. But yeah, the last time I was in there too, there was, they were having some kind of bar issues. I don't know what, what thing was. So I just sat outside.
Yeah. Well, yeah, everything's kind of upside down with COVID these days. So.
Yeah, it's hard to recognize people with masks, that's for sure. Or have you, have you tried smiling? You know, if you're trying to have like a normal conversation, you gotta just squint. Pretend like you're smiling.
Yeah, it's, it's hard. And for me, I mean, I, I pay attention to actually watching the person's mouth move. So I can better hear people and I can't do that now. So it's hard now. I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the other thing on your website that I, I thought was, was interesting is you said Poway first, support community and, and the local businesses. So maybe share some thoughts there on that issue.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that may be tough to do as a council member, like we've been discussing, a real role and job responsibilities. But you know, I'd like to see the city council promote or kind of give preferential treatment to local businesses. So maybe like 25% of projects are given or afforded to local Poway residents or business owners, like, you know, we have that local Ford dealership, but you know, the city ended up purchasing a bunch of trucks from a different dealership. And, you know, there may be some price negotiation, maybe Poway wasn't able to do it. I, I can understand that. I'm not sure that's what happened. But I would like to see these sort of things at least be offered to Poway residents first. I don't know if you, how, how much you can do of that legally, but if I had that magic wand, I would do 25% at least would go to local Poway businesses. Another thing too is, you know, I know that everyone loves Chick-fil-A and restaurants like that, but I would much prefer to see those in the business park and, and see local businesses down in Poway. So a big restaurant chain or a big restaurant, a local restaurant down on Power Road and have those big chains kind of up, not on, on the main drag. But I, I think the statement sort of is exactly what I mean, is that I would like to push Poway small businesses first. You know, they may be a chain, but if the owner is from Poway and that's a franchised thing, then that would count too. But I'd like to promote the, the, the local residents first.
Gotcha. Yeah, you know, there's, there's a lot of really good local businesses here in Poway. One of the things that I try to do is on the nights when our family doesn't cook. You know, it's the same question, what do you want? Where do you want to go? I don't know. What do you want? I always make it a point to get on Yelp and I'll look up Poway restaurants. And then I stack rank them based on the review rating and I'll look at the top of the list and I'll say, have I gone there? Have I gone there? And then eventually I pick some and I've visited some amazing restaurants here in town that I otherwise wouldn't have seeked out. So there's a lot of great businesses here locally.
No, definitely. And sometimes they're kind of tucked away. You know, I went to a Filipino restaurant the other day on Poway Road, kind of going towards where all those dirt bikes are being sold, kind of across the street from Garden Road and 7-Eleven on that side of Poway Road. Power Road. In that shopping center over there, there's a, there's a Filipino restaurant. It's really good. I highly recommend it.
Right on. I think I know the shopping center you're talking about. There used to be a, like a billiards store.
Yeah, on the backside of that one.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right on.
Not the side of the church, but like the other side or where you, you go vote on the other side.
Here, here's another question that came in and we sort of touched on this, but Pete Neeld, who, frequent friend of the John Riley Project Podcast, he said,
Yeah, tries the blue Corvette.
Oh, yeah. So you know about Pete. He's got a great car. Calypso, yeah. So Pete Neeld said, Poway Road notwithstanding, what are the issues you have heard that needs the most help specifically in District Four?
I don't understand the question.
So what are the most important issues you're hearing from voters in District Four, not counting Poway Road?
Oh, so what we talked about before?
Well, in, in District Four, you're talking to voters, you're hearing what, whether their concerns, their issues driving them. What is important to the voters, not counting Poway Road?
No, I got you. I just, I thought we already talked about. But yeah, I can, I can reiterate. I mean, most of the things I'm, I'm, I'm running into is, is really specific to Poway Road and traffic. And, and, you know, that's the biggest things. I have talked to people in other districts and, you know, and their issues range. You know, from the Performing Arts Center to, you know, the farm. You know, their, their issues are, are different. But for District Four, you know, I think it's, it ranges. It goes from the the light pollution, like I said, from Scripps Power Parkway, it goes all the way up to the overdevelopment of Poway Road and, and, you know, how can we kind of reset our 20-year plan to keep our motto, the city in the country? And, you know, there's other people that are also upset about just the, the lengthy processes in the city to get permits for an ADU or for any extra things they want to build on their, on their property. So, you know, it is, it is a big range. And that's sort of not surprising in America. You know, everyone's so individualistic that I'm sure, you know, I mean, there are commonalities, but I think people's main issues tend to, tend to differ. And like I said, I, I did run into a few people, more than a few people that didn't even know we were in districts. And we're actually pretty upset about not being able to vote for District Two. That's also up for reelection.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, I think people are going to wake up to that when they look at their ballot and they're only going to have one race to vote on, or maybe no races to vote on because of the way it plays out. You know, you, you just spoke about permitting processes and ADUs, you know, and that's granny flats and all that.
Yeah.
Now, Mayor Voss has this proposal that it's really only been discussed conceptually, as far as I know, is to number one streamline the permitting process to make it easier for people to build a granny flat on their property. But Mayor Voss went the extra step in proposing that the city make a loan to the property owner and then participate in a revenue share on the rental income to pay not only the homeowner back, to pay a property manager back and also to pay the city back. And I'm interested in your thoughts on that proposal.
It sounds enticing. I'd like to actually read it, to be honest with you. But, I mean, there was something similar done on Garden Road. I remember like years ago about solar and getting solar on, on certain building on, on your house and, and sort of a program that they did for that. But I, I mean, I think that's great. I mean, I think having the, a streamlined and efficient way of creating an ADU, a granny flat on your property is probably better than these stacks of apartments we see on Power Roads. I'd like to see that a little bit more. I'm even in a, in a similar position. You know, my, my, my parents have some room and so I'm, I'm going to try and build an ADU on their property. And that's sort of the compromise we need to do in California. It's so expensive here, especially San Diego. You know, a thousand square feet is like 650 grand. So an ADU could run you 300 for 1700 square feet. So it is, it is a steal. And so if the city wants to help promote that, I, I think that's a great idea. Now, the nitty gritty on, on how to actually do that in this program that Mayor Voss is, is suggesting, I'd have to read through it and, you know, I'd hope that if, if it gets pushed through with current city council members, that there'd be a lively and open debate to get the best and most efficient program out there. I think that's the real purpose of debating is you're, you're sort of trying to get the best versus just the first.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think it has been discussed at the city council level, but my understanding is it's just been more of a conceptual idea that hasn't started, you know, getting any legs yet. So yeah, I encourage you to take a closer look at that. I think it's an interesting proposal. I, I see parts of it I like and parts that I'm questioning. But, you know, there, we're seeing a few more questions that are flowing in here on the live stream. And some, and, and they're both about the penitentiary. And I know that you've already commented on, on this, but people are kind of popping in on this live stream, you know, at middle.
Yeah, that's, I apologize. What confused me about Pete Neeld, I thought we had already talked about, but now I'm understanding. People are coming in live versus just watching it.
Exactly. Yeah. So, and, and so people are, number one, I'm, I'm going to try to interpret what some people are saying here. So number one, people are upset with the penitentiary building itself. Kind of being popped up and being an eyesore for people in South Poway. Then there's the concept of the people that are moving in, the, in that facility is, is Amazon. Which is going to bring in a lot of, you know, low-paying jobs. You know, it's not big pharma, like you were hoping to move into the business park. I'd be, you know, got people that are going to be on minimum wage or a little bit above that. Which then brings us into the whole concept of affordable housing and where are these people are going to live? And does Poway have housing that can meet their needs? So I just threw a bunch of things on the table there at once. You know, maybe you could share some additional thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, no council member is going to be an expert on, on every topic. And I think that's where a part of our role comes into play, which is doing our due diligence to talk to experts in the field to, to get the, the best answers while also going around the public and getting their feedback on what they want to do or not to do. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not a big fan of that thing either. I mean, I think that my gripe is, is less so the aesthetics of it, but more so the, the, the quality and the level of jobs that we see going into Poway. Like you mentioned, I'd like to see a, a lot bigger businesses. I, I keep mentioning pharma just because I'm from the pharmaceutical industry, but it's not some conspiracy that I only want pharmaceuticals, you know? I know I'm sure people hear something like that. Any industry, but you know, I'm not necessarily for, like you said, these sort of minimum wage jobs, even though they, they are also useful. I think there was a better use of that, that large space, but I think you, you touched on this a little bit earlier, John, about private property and, and not being able to do too much about what the private owners want to do with their property. But we could influence them a bit. And if I could go back and if I was a council member and I had that magic wand, I would, I would influence them into doing something more. I mean, we've got General Atomics up there and then that's a great company to have up there and employ people and have. I would influence them into doing something more. I mean, we've got General Atomics up there and then that's a great company to have up there and employ people and have a wide range of, of employment. So for anywhere from minimum wage, but also a lot higher paying jobs. Um, but like you said, with Amazon, you're only sort of going to get the, the one grouping versus a, a, a range. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'm hoping as a council member, I can mitigate more penitentiaries and, uh, and bring in, uh, pharmaceutical industry or others of the sort.
Yeah. I think there's a, you know, a development, um, piece to the city that I think tries to bring in some of that kind of business. But I think the, we're talking like the city councils had a meeting last night, right? Talking about where to put affordable housing. And they're debating upon which site and Monte Vista or Twin Peaks or, or the Big Stone Lodge site.
Yeah.
And I, I think if I recall, they, they, they ixnayed, um, Twin Peaks and Big Stone Lodge. I think they're going to focus on that plot at Monte Vista near the hospital. But that's also one of the controversies or, or maybe objections to the, the, the farm development in North Poway where those homes are not going to be affordable housing homes. They're going to be homes that are going to be around a million dollars. So what, what's your opinion on affordable housing? Should Poway do affordable housing? If so, where should they do it? Um, how would you feel about that?
I mean, I, I, I mean, this may be not completely true, so I'll, I'll have to double check. So take this with a grain of salt, but when I talked to, uh, one of those guys that came by with, uh, the old truck from, from the farm. Um, they mentioned that a certain subset would be affordable housing, or at least not as expensive. But it is a delicate balance. I mean, if you want the, uh, the city and the country, uh, you're going to have less affordable housing to get that space. Um, or just, you don't have to develop as much and you can push more of the parks and just amenities. Um, but I think that's the one thing that I've noticed with the council is that it seems like if there is a site or is a space to develop, they will develop it. Um, in, into something, um, like affordable housing or, uh, or the like. And I think that we don't need to develop everything that we have. We could create, um, spaces for entertainment like parks or, uh, you know, or shopping centers or whichever, but it doesn't always have to be developed. When it comes to the farm, I mean, the way it sits, sits now, I mean, it's overgrown. It is a little bit of an eyesore. Um, and I do think that the, at least the, the gist of what the farm is aiming to do sounds nice. Uh, they have a wide range of different types of housing that, that seems like it'll be all right. And they have a good amount of amenities that they're also going to put in place. Sort of counterbalance, uh, the housing that they're, that they're putting there. Um, but I think that the, the issues that those residents around that are feeling are what South Poway has been feeling for years. Uh, so I, I, I think that they also have to realize that, uh, you know, if it's in your backyard, you may have an issue, but we've been having that issue for a long time now and no one seemed to care. Uh, when it was, you know, on the other side of Poway. But yeah, I mean, I, I think as a council member, I, I'm going to have to work with and negotiate with the other council members in order to move them in a direction that's best for the public, uh, by taking in their opinion.
Yeah. Um, it, it's, it's going to be difficult to try to figure out the right way to do affordable housing. That makes sense for the city and the property owner and satisfies the needs of the community. But sometimes I get a sense just that people, you know, some people say there's a South Poway and a North Poway, and there's a division. Other people say, hey, we're all one big happy city and we all love each other. And both are, I think are true. Uh, but I think people in South Poway have been, um, they kind of feel like, you know, they're always on the short end of the stick, right? They're the ones that are always having the affordable housing play, uh, units put in. And so sometimes there, you sense that they want to zing North Poway and, you know, try to get more housing in the farm. You know what I mean? Like,
Yeah, eye for an eye.
Right? I mean, there's a little bit of that.
I could see that. I mean, but I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, the farm, they, they, those pamphlets look nice. Everything they, they say looks nice. Um, but you know, that's another thing too, with a lot of people is that they want affordable housing, but they don't want it in their backyard. They want affordable housing, but do it over there. And then the same goes for the, for the, the people on the other side. So I mean, if you, if you want the, or, or, you know, they'll, they'll say, you know, they want to, they want to keep that motto of the city and the country, but they also want affordable housing. So you're always going to be balancing things and, you know, not everyone is going to be happy, but you got to do what's best for the majority of people and, and, and honestly, just do your best for the city and not for the developer or for whatever you think uh, is, is best. Um, you know, I've gotten some, some pretty interesting opinions about the farm. I had an individual, uh, that talked about, maybe we wouldn't even need that if the city invested heavily in reclaimed water. And then the, uh, you know, they could have used reclaimed water there to, uh, to water the, uh, the Gulf Range. And it would have never maybe went, went under business because they were paying for, for water. So you know, you've got a lot of opinions out there. I, I do like the reclaimed water idea and it's a big investment upfront. So uh, you'd have to see how you're going to do that. But overall, I mean, it seems like a, it could be a good idea, especially for fighting fires. You could use reclaimed water instead of other waters. Uh, and save the long-term cost of water, uh, in Poway. Um, but you know, that's all things that you need to, to discuss with the public and also with the other city council members to convince them of whatever the public wants, uh, you know, or not.
Well, it, it's, it's interesting. You know, it's this whole idea of NIMBYism, right? You know, not in my backyard. And we see that right here in Poway. And, and like, yeah, let's just consider the site for affordable housing on Twin, on Twin Peaks. And, um, Joe St. Lucas just, um, asked a question here. He said, the Twin Peaks site was excluded from the affordable housing proposal last night, you know, at the city council meeting. Do you think it should have been kept to see if anyone wanted to develop on it now? You know, I know that site in particular, the local community there was very, um, very NIMBY on keeping that, um, uh, you know, they were objecting to having that as an affordable housing, uh, location. I mean, what are your thoughts on that site specifically? And should the city have kept it on the table for affordable housing or should they have ixnayed it to satisfy the needs of that community?
I mean, uh, I, I'm not sure. I'm, I know what he's talking about, but in at least last night's meeting, I thought John Mullen did a good job announcing all three sites. Uh, so it's not like he only announced two and, and not Twin Peaks. Um, and, but you're right. I mean, that, that Twin Peaks area, they were really against that idea. And so I think the council members were sort of pushing themselves away from that site, uh, giving one reason or another. But I mean, that's, that goes back to the whole idea is, does it need to be developed? Do we need to have all these developments go into place? Uh, and if so, does it have to be affordable housing? Can it be something else? Um, you know, what, what is the push? What, what is the intense push to develop every single site in Poway? Um, and, and what do the residents want? And, and, and having, uh, transparency and discussing that and being, you know, somewhat confrontational by saying, hey, you may not want this in your backyard, but those other sites don't want it in their backyard either. Um, you know, so, uh, we, we have to come to a, a solution together, uh, versus just kicking back these ideas and, 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 and like you said, making it a north versus south, uh, South Poway. It really isn't. Uh, it's such a small town in a sense that we, we only have 50,000 people here. You're, you're going to run into people eventually.
Yeah. The, it's interesting. The Twin Peaks site in particular, that's in District Two and District Two also is going to be on the ballot in November. And so you kind of wonder if that's in play as well.
I'm sure it is.
Hell yeah, it's gotta be. Um, because there's an incumbent there that's running for reelection. So I'm sure that plays a role to some degree.
As much as it plays in Pow, in South Poway, you know, we have developments that have already been approved and are ongoing and potentially new ones with, uh, you know, all those businesses that went under and what they're going to want to do in the future. So that's in play for sure. I'm sure everyone in South Poway is intrigued about what will happen there. And so I'm sure in District Two, Twin Peaks is going to be a site that is, uh, you know, highly debated.
Yeah, for sure. Let's, you know, we're talking about affordable housing. The other hot topic in Poway and I, some people online were rightfully saying, this always seems to come up during election season, but the concept of veterans housing, um, you know, some people think we need to have affordable housing for veterans because these are people that protected our country. Um, other people wonder why it needs to be exclusively for veterans. Um, what, what's your take on that, uh, concept?
And my, my father's a veteran and I come from a long line of veterans. So I, I may be a little bit biased in this answer. So um, I, I do think it's nice to have, uh, housing set aside for veterans or disabled members of our community. But I think the real fact is I think the council has, has I guess offered or said that they would do, uh, affordable housing for veterans. And so I think they need to go forth and complete that goal, especially if that's what they, uh, they said that they were going to do for the public. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think in general, I think it's, it's nice to have, when you do have affordable housing, have subsections that are available for veterans and disabled members of our community. Um, I mean, it's the same thing when you, you know, you go to the mall and, or to the, the, uh, the movie theater outside of COVID. And you get a discount for being a veteran. I mean, I think that, uh, I don't know how legally, how you can guarantee that this one affordable housing development is only going to be for veterans. I'm not sure of the legal aspects of it. Uh, but you could offer, you know, discounted prices for, for veterans so that it's not completely a veterans affordable housing block, but they do have a lower price. You kind of, um, compromise on that idea. Uh, but overall, I, I do think it's nice to give back to those of us in the community. Uh, that sacrificed more than others or the same as others, but in a different way, uh, for the greater good.
Yeah. You know, I think it's a debatable topic in, in my opinion, you know, because I think to your point, you can't exclusively and legally make it only for veterans. Um, but, but by the same token, there's so much public sympathy and public support of veterans. Especially in Poway, you know, you look around, I mean, the VFW and there's just so many examples of veterans that are big parts of our community. So it's an interesting topic and it does come up on election season. And to your point, the council did commit to it. Um, they shifted gears because originally it was going to be there on Twin Peaks.
Yeah.
And then I think they talked about having it at the Big Stone Lodge site. And so I don't know where it's going to go. Um,
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, John. The internet. Um, I, I thought, you know, last night at least, Caitlin Frank had this idea about kind of keeping it towards Pomerato and the hospital there. And I thought that was a good idea. If you're going to do veterans housing, uh, a lot of our veterans, uh, are in need of healthcare and having it closer to the hospital is nice. So, you know, I, I think like we, we were talking about earlier, is there smart ways to do development and there's unsmart ways as well.
Yeah. Uh, you know, it's funny is like back in, gosh, when was it? Maybe oh seven or oh eight? Um, I was on the, uh, City of Poway's Budget Review Committee, which by the way, is a fascinating assignment. If you want to be appointed to a committee, you learn so much about the city. But back then they made a, an interesting comment that there was very little empty space in Poway to develop on. And the city of course was always hungry to develop because they can transform that land into property tax revenue. Um, and, but you know, that land was, is, is almost gone. There's very little of it left. Um, so those little, those little tiny plots like Monte Vista are now being targeted. Um, so it's, it's, it's going to be a debatable point here in, to your previous issue, the city and the country, and how do you make all that work together?
No, yeah, you're, you're definitely juggling a lot of things and sometimes things are on opposite spectrum. Um, I mean, it would be great to be on a committee like that. I mean, in oh seven, I was busy trying to graduate high school. But I, I would, I, I mean, if anything, if, if, uh, you know, you know, win or lose, I, I'd still like to continue to give back to Poway. So if I, if I lose this coming up, uh, uh, election, it's not like I'm going to be hiding in my closet crying. I'm, I'm going to continue to move forward. Uh, you know, this whole thing.
Positive mindset, you know?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I think I'm going to win, but hey, you know, uh, win or lose, I, I'm, uh, just happy that I'm doing something for Poway. I'm running for city council. And, uh, I'll do whichever, whatever's needed to continue to give back to, to the, the community.
Awesome. Um, there's a couple of more things I want to touch on. We're like at about an hour. So I don't want to go too longer. But, um, what, one of the criticisms that some people have of the City of Poway is that unlike any other city in our general area, the City of Poway does not have a climate action plan. They have no, you know, s- s- no plan to, you know, curb greenhouse gases and, you know, we can go down the line of all the potential benefits. So what are your thoughts on, you know, the climate issues? And what should the city do or not be doing as it relates to that?
Yeah. I mean, like, like this is a, that is a good question. I mean, I think it would go back to that idea that not everyone is an expert, you know? I, I may be an expert, uh, in immunology, but doesn't mean I'm an expert in environmental sciences. And I, I've noticed this a lot and with, uh, within even my own, uh, grouping of, uh, of occupational people, you know, scientists is that everyone is, seems to be an expert on everyone else's topic. You know, you've got Bill Nye, who is now an expert on, on virology and it's just not how it works. So I would, I would defer to environmental scientists that are, uh, going out there and seeking out data to see whether or not, how relevant the data is, how accurate it is. I'd like to see their data. I'd like to see how they're setting up their, uh, their experiments and, and their, uh, you know, uh, like in, um, in pharmaceuticals, you know, if you're not doing a double blind placebo, you're not doing any of that in order to do your, your, uh, your clinical trials, then your setup may be flawed. And I'd like to see what the environmental scientists are doing uh, about perceived, uh, changes within, uh, within the environment. I tend to tell you as someone who enjoys hunting and being out camping, um, I'd love to see more recycling and promotion of just taking care of our world and our environment. Uh, I think it is only for the betterment of future generations. So you can argue all you want, whether or not global warming and all this is true or not. I think it's a mute point. The, either way, it's good for the environment to take care of, uh, for, for future generations. So I don't, I don't think it matters if it's true or not, to be honest with you. But it would be nice to see more of that in Poway. Um, I, I think for me, I'd like to speak with some experts in the field. Um, to see how you could do that in Poway because there's a, a balancing act between raising costs. Uh, because everything costs money. So it would be definitely a, a balancing act and seeing how or what we can do. Uh, reclaimed water could be one of them. Um, that's always a, a positive. It could save off, uh, our water costs, especially for, uh, the irrigation for city owned things and properties like parks or whichever, uh, saving and cutting, uh, costs of water. Um, but, but there's probably other ways to do it, uh, as well.
We, it's just, it's always seems to me that this should be such an easy thing for the city council to do because they're already putting in LED lighting on the streetlights. And they've already got a solar array and I think it's kind of near the intersection of Pomerato and Ted Williams. And I'm not sure if that only powers that fire station there or if it does more. I don't know the detail, but the city is already doing things, you know? You, you figure that it would be pretty easy for them to frame it into a climate action plan and add a few more things to it and it'd be something substantive. And certainly, you know,
Yeah.
politicians, it would help them have a talking point.
I'm not sure what the critique is, you know, like if our city is already doing things of that nature, do we need it to be organized into a plan? Um, yeah. I, I, I don't, I, I don't know. I, I think that the, whatever the solution is probably more important, uh, than how we're getting there. But I think that, um, yeah, I mean, if we, like with that, with those same people that are interested in having a plan, if, if the city framed all that you mentioned into a plan, would they all of a sudden be happy and that's all they needed? I'm not sure. I mean, I think we probably do more for the environment within power. We're already along those lines. We're already moving towards that. Um, I, I think we could do, do more and, and, uh, keep Poway pretty green.
We, you know, you've brought up reclaimed water a couple of times. Have, have you ever sat down with John Mullen? Cause he, he does a lot of work on that.
Yeah. I, I actually, I, I spoke with, I'm not going to name him just in case, but I, I have a neighbor that, uh, got an award from the government for reclaimed water projects in, uh, off of, uh, on, on the Marine Corps base. And, uh, you know, I went over there, uh, brought him some figs and sat down with a notebook and just took a lot of notes on, on his ideas. And I'd love to introduce him to John, uh, and, uh, other council members to hear what he has to say about reclaimed water, how easy and not easy it is to do in the City of Poway. Uh, but you know, this guy, uh, is retired now, but he has a lot of great ideas when it comes to reclaimed water and how to do it efficiently. To keep costs low. Uh, but he does admit that there would be an upfront cost to this that maybe higher than people expect. Uh, but the tail, uh, benefits are, 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 you know, priceless. You know, you're going to have lower costs of water in the future and, and that may be a smart thing to do on the front end.
Yeah. I think it's a fascinating topic because, you know, everyone's trying to figure out like, how do we resolve the fact that we live on a, in a desert near the ocean? And always dealing with. technology is always going to be the answer, right? So the D-Sal plant in Carlsbad and then this reclaimed water, the way that I understand it is, is that reclaimed water is cleaner and purer than the water we normally get out of the tap.
Yeah, I mean, that's what this guy was saying too. But the thing is, is there's different pipes, uh, and there's a lot of regulations on, you know, the gray water and the brown water and how to separate that out and what you are actually recycling. And so there is some costs to that, you know, laying new, uh, potentially laying new pipe. Um, and so I, I think there would be a lot of costs, but like you said, I mean, knowledge is power and technology is one of our greatest gifts. So we should use that, especially for a city like Poway. Uh, you know, when I was going back and forth from Tokyo, I mean, that city is insanely massive. Uh, and they had, uh, wifi for the whole city. Yeah. So I mean, uh, I mean, depending on where you're at, it's not that good, but still there is wifi and if a tourist, you're never going to be caught on airplane mode with no wifi. You can always get around and with a city like that with their, uh, public transportation, as long as you had Google Maps, I mean, you can get anywhere really easily, even in a foreign language. So, um, I'm not saying Poway should go along those lines. Maybe they should, maybe they should get a public wifi. I don't know, but I think we should talk with the public, we should talk with experts and we should make, uh, you know, continue to make Poway, uh, a place where we want to live. And I, and it's not that it's not livable right now. I don't think, uh, Poway is a terrible place to live at all.
Of course not.
Yeah.
A great city, great place to raise a family and
Yeah.
That's partly why housing is so expensive here because it's so desirable to be here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to see more of my, you know, like that's one sad thing I haven't noticed is that like a lot of the kids that I graduated high school with aren't back in power. You know, they, they went and settled places that were a lot cheaper and it would be cool to see people that graduate Poway High, that grew up in Poway, uh, coming back and settling in Poway. Um, that, that would be nice. Now, how to do that? I'm all ears. I'd love to hear everyone's opinion on, on how we could do that and, and entice people to come back to Poway and settle here and get the next generation of Powegians. My dad, I, he coined that term, maybe he didn't, but he likes to say that a lot, Powegians.
I think that's the right term. Um, what's, you wouldn't want to say Poweites. Yeah, Powegians is the right.
Oh, regions, yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you know, it's interesting is I, I'll run across people that have lived here in Poway as children and then, um, now as an adult. And, and when you discover them, that they always are so proud of the city. And I live in a community here that with the homes were developed in the late eighties. And a friend of mine who lived in Poway and lived in Poway as a, as a youngster, he said when he was in high school, him and his buddies used to come up into my neighborhood when it was undeveloped and they'd sit here and drink beer. You know, on a Friday night, you know?
That's awesome.
And you hear these stories and then, you know, the other people that lived in Poway and there was like a motorcycle, motocross track, like I think somewhere near the intersection of Twin Peaks and Community and
Oh, wow.
It's fascinating of the things you learn. And have you ever met Mary Shepherdson?
I don't believe so.
She is, um, a really special person. She's very involved. I think she's one of the leaders of the Poway Historical Society.
Okay.
And she posts, um, historical photos of Poway and excerpts from old newspaper articles.
Oh, cool.
It's a, she's a great follow on Facebook, Mary Shepherdson.
Yeah. I don't use Facebook that much, to be honest with you, but maybe she's the one person I go back to, uh, to follow.
Okay. Well, she's a good one to follow, I'll tell you. So, um,
No, that's great. I mean, oh, sorry, you go, John.
No, 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 no. Oh, I were, it's the awkwardness here of, of Zoom. And I'm, by the way, I'm looking straight at my camera, but you're here on my computer and I'm
Yeah.
Balance of those two. Let, let me switch gears again and, um, you know, we talked a little about, you know, reclaim water, but you know, what was it? We had a water crisis here in Poway like nine months ago or so, right? Um, what was your opinion on how all that went down?
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought that was, you know, my, my dad has a saying that they, they, they would talk about, uh, in the Marine Corps. I don't know if I can say, I don't know how family friendly, friendly the show is, so I don't know if I can say it.
You can say whatever you want.
There's a lot of Ps in it, you know, you know, uh, prior planning prevents piss poor performance. And I, that if the, if, if, uh, the council and most of the city, uh, kept tabs on what was happening there and, and keeping up to date with any projects that needed, uh, you know, refurbishing, they, they should be up to date on all of that. It shouldn't be a surprise. You know, they were talking about how it was like some piece that got kept open and, and that was where the whole problem came. But I mean, that, that shouldn't happen, to be honest with you. I mean, you had, uh, people boiling water, uh, to make it safe. And, and you know, we, we graduated from the, the 18th century a long time ago. So I don't think, I mean, we do that in Lebanon sometimes, you know, when I go back and visit my family, I don't, we should be doing that in, in supposedly the number one country in the world and maybe even city, you know? So I think, I think that it was just, you know, mismanagement on, on, uh, keeping tabs on things that need to be restored or updated or kept at, you know, top performance. And you know, maybe there's also something to be said about, uh, about this reclaimed water thing and about, you know, having two different setups and, and what you're using water for. You know, maybe reclaimed water could be for irrigation and other things could be for drinking water, but making sure that we're running at a, a high level, high efficiency, so that we're not running into problems like that, uh, where one thing is breaking and the whole city is suffering. It should be, you know, always in a state of repair.
Yeah, right on. Um, you know, I, I just saw a note here from Joe St. Lucas in the live stream chat. And he said FYI, John Mullen has stated that the city of San Diego would not guarantee that they'd sell enough water to Poway to justify the expense of the reclaimed water. It's interesting.
That is interesting.
Um, because yeah, there's an upfront cost to kind of building infrastructure for it, but they might not be able to deliver enough volume.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of make it pencil out. That's a interesting.
That is interesting. No, I, I may call John later on today and just ask more about that. Um, you know, just see, you know, because he's the one who mentioned it, right? John was?
Um, no, well, Joe St. Lucas brought it up in the chat.
Sure.
But John Mullen, the city council member, he, as a city council person, he sits on a number of countywide committees.
Yeah.
He, he's on the one for the reclaimed water project.
Oh, I got, I got you. Okay. I thought he was just, that's what he said. Someone may have told him that, so. But yeah, I mean, I, I, either way, I'd like to talk to John. Maybe he has ideas on getting around that. Um, you know, and, and we can go from there. But like, I mean, like we were talking about, this is just an idea. It's not necessarily every idea, uh, is going to become a reality. But I think generating ideas to create solutions for problems is, is a good step.
Agreed, hundred percent. So yeah, seek out John. He, he'll have some interesting thoughts on this. And, and in fact, I would invite again to the listeners and viewers that are doing the, checking out the live stream, share your comments in the, um, YouTube or the Facebook comment section and I'll read, read them on the air. So, um, so Frank can respond. Um, we did get one question before we got started with the live stream. I can't believe I left this off until we've gotten to this point, but the Poway Center for the Performing Arts is a hot topic. You know, people love it. Some people think it should be sold. It, it's cash flow negative. It needs upgrades and repairs. Maybe it should be sold. Should the school district buy it? Yes or no? So where do you stand on the whole PCPA?
Yeah, that's a hard question. I mean, I don't know if I have a stance yet. Uh, I'm just, like I said, I'm still gathering opinions, uh, you know, last or a week, maybe two weeks ago, I was at a Kiwanis meeting and I was asking people the same question. Um, but you know, there's, there's, there's pros and cons on both decisions, you know? One, one thing's for sure is, you know, that it's, it's kind of strange to think about after all these bonds that we've been giving to PUSD that they can afford a $60 million, uh, Performing Arts Center, you know, that's, that's one thing I just always is a little bit curious. But you know, the Performing Arts Center supposedly needs four to five million dollars worth of restoration and it costs an X amount of money. I think it's like 300,000 or so per year, just for upkeep. Um, but I think the best idea maybe came from, um, someone on the, uh, the school board. Um, I don't want to name anyone, just in case I get someone wrong, but their idea was pretty, pretty cool in the sense that they would create a, a committee and their main purpose of this committee would be generating the money for the upkeep and potential future restoration for the Performing Arts Center, so that it would be kept within the city. Um, and that's, that's if you're very, uh, if you're for keeping the Performing Arts Center within the city of Poway, I mean, that may be the best compromise is creating this committee, uh, and they generate, they go out and they seek out whatever way to generate the money to keep that upkeep and to restore it, uh, so that there is no cost to the city. Um, you know, there's a lot of benefits for having the Performing Arts Center in, in the city. I mean, it's an attraction. You bring people from outside of the city to, um, you know, whatever musicals or things that you're doing within the, uh, in the building. Um, I'm not necessarily sure. I'm, I'm sure Poway would use it, uh, in, uh, positively as well, Poway High School or, or PUSD, but coming from someone who, who has tried renting, uh, fields from PUSD before, it's, it's kind of a nightmare. So if, if, uh, if you're a Poway resident that uses the Performing Arts Center for, let's say the pageant or whichever, and you think PUSD is going to be smoother to deal with to rent that thing out for your needs, I, I, I think it's going to be a lot worse. Um, but I, I don't necessarily have an exact opinion yet, but I am leaning more towards, uh, that compromise of having a committee, uh, go forth and, and, uh, generate the money to make sure that the city of Poway and its residents aren't, it's not costing us anything. Is there going to go out and get a revenue for the upkeep and potentially the restoration of it?
Yeah, it sounds like there's, I don't know, is it four or five million dollars worth of, um, infrastructure and upgrade improvement to the building?
Yeah.
And then on top of it, it's cash flow negative, like roughly a half a million dollars a year, maybe a little bit more than that.
Uh, sure.
So yeah, there are some big questions that need to be answered there. And, you know, people in Poway generally are supportive of the facility. They like having it, but then, you know, how do you solve these financial problems?
No, yeah, I, and I guess you're correcting me. I, I didn't know it was that high of, of an upkeep, upkeep.
Um, I might be wrong, but I think it's something like that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it sounds familiar. I, I can't remember what I read, but I, I do also, you know, question some of that restoration cost, you know? I remember reading something like some of it would go for re-upholstery of, of like every seat that was in there and, you know, maybe we could hold off on that.
Okay.
Generation down. Um, I, I can say I've been in that booth before and it, it does seem a little bit outdated. Um, but, um, like you said, I mean, a lot of people like it in the city. I mean, it's nice that our city has it. Um, but, and maybe this, this idea of having this committee is a good way of, of having a compromise to keep it within the city, uh, and not having it cost us anything.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, if they could figure out a way to do it, you know, maybe there's a foundation they can build that can spin off some revenue.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, for the facility and then have a separate strategy to resolve the annual operating deficit. Um, John Carson chimed in here. He said, how about we find a new management group for the Poway?
Yeah, that's a good idea too. I mean, the current one is doing something very specific. And so that's why I think that idea of creating a new management group that only works on revenue, uh, you know, to keep the upkeep and, uh, potential restoration would be two separate things. Uh, but maybe John's right, uh, Carson, you know, you just, just change the management group so that it does both. And that, that's also a potential option, but, um, you know, if you're out there and you're very much against having a performing arts center, I think even that idea would not work for you. But I, I, I think the general consensus is that everyone likes the performing, uh, performing arts center, but you know, if it's costing us a lot of money per year and it needs all these things done to it, you know, why not sell it? Um, but like Mr. Carson said and others, I mean, I think there's a way to keep it, uh, whilst also, uh, having upkeep and restoration and costing Poway nothing by generating money itself.
Well, this is kind of the interesting angle to it is that if the city sold it, then that would relieve the city government of the deficit and the, and the upgrades. But if they sold it to the school district, well, then the same taxpayers are having to pay for it either way.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think, I think this, my guess is, I'm trying to read between the lines is, is that this, the, the goal is that the school board eventually passes a new bond to do all the additional upgrades to all the schools and they sneak the Poway Performing Arts Center into it. So the new bond would cover it as well. And I think that's what they're, they're plotting towards.
I could see that.
Who knows if the, if the public's going to approve another school bond? I mean, they, the last one failed and people are still angry about the billion dollar bond over 10 years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people are getting tired of loans, you know? I, I know a lot of my friends are still paying back loans from college, you know? So I think, I think having an idea that generates money versus getting loans maybe be, maybe a good idea. I think maybe we should look into it a lot more.
So I got a question here from a gentleman who seems to want to be unnamed. He's, he calls himself Don Poway. And, um, he says, what differentiates you from Chris Olps and Kalen Frank? Those are your two competitors.
Oh, man. Let's just rewind the hour and 25 minutes.
Give me one sentence, you know, I know. You just, in a short bit, what, what makes you special and different than those two?
Uh, Don, my biggest difference is that my background is in conflict resolution. And, uh, I've said this before, but the hard reality of a city council member is that we are oversight on the city manager and on the attorney, on the city attorney. And so my job is to work with S, experts in various fields and also while also getting the public's opinion in order to do that oversight. And so that is what I'm, uh, gearing up to do. And I have a background in that and I think I have a personality for it. And, um, you know, another thing too, is that you, as a council member, you have to work with other council members in order to get a positive vote, a winning vote. And, and so if no one wants to work with you, uh, then you're in bad shape. Uh, and I'm not saying that no one wants to work with the, the people I'm running against, but I can guarantee you that people will work with me. I do it as a job. Um, and I think that's probably the, the biggest differentiation between us three. Uh, with, with me and Chris, I think we probably have more similar similarities since we grew up in Poway. Um, but we are also different in the reason that I just stated before.
Okay. I think that was a good answer. Um, here, here's another topic we haven't touched on is the, the Poway Community Center, Senior Center, you know, they just tore it down. They're rebuilding it. Uh, some people are overjoyed that it's new and it will be a huge improvement over the, the old facility, which was crumbling. And the new one's going to be named after our former mayor, uh, Mickey Cufanya. Other people said that the, the performing, I mean, the senior center was fine as it was and the city didn't need to be spending money on that. They needed to be spending that money on other initiatives. So what's, now granted, it's, it's already torn down. They're already building it, but what's your take on the whole issue?
I mean, I think it's a mute point now. I mean, it's, it's already being built, so there's not much we can, we can do about that at the moment. And I just hope it's as nice as they, they say it's going to be. Um, and it's used as much as it's going to be. Uh, I think one thing I noticed about that, uh, area was I, I don't feel like it was getting used as much as it should have been, but maybe it is because it was falling apart and no one wanted to be there to do their events because it maybe wasn't nice enough or, or what have you. Um, but yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, it's already being built. So I think it's just going to be interesting to see how nice it is. And I'm hoping that the city uses it, uh, as efficiently and, and to maximize capacity. I think that if we're going to be investing in items like that, we have to use them and, and use them a lot.
Well, I, I know, I, I was in the old facility multiple times, like for, for Poway Girl Softball Drafts, you know, we get together and create the team.
Nice.
And we would have our meetings there. And then a couple of other meetings I've had at that facility and I've been, um, some of, actually a, a candidate forum was in the, 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 you know, the little auditorium there. And yeah, that, that facility had shown its wear and tear.
Yeah.
So I, I've seen the drawings that, for the new one, they look wonderful and it's going to be a little smaller, but it sounds like they're going to get better use out of it. Um, and the good news is, is that I think they're paying cash for, you know, i- if not all of it, a significant percentage of it. It's not like it's going to go out to another bond.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right on that. I've been there a few times. I mean, last time I was in there was probably sometime around college. It was some sort of prom I was, I was volunteering at that was held in that location. But I mean, I don't think it's looking that bad, to be honest with you.
Yeah, you know, like to your point, it's already kind of going. I mean, you're not going to be able to shift gears on it now.
No, yeah.
But it was definitely a hot topic in the 2018 election cycle. A lot of the candidates, you know, were either really for it or really against it. Yeah, so it was an interesting discussion point.
Yeah, I mean, I noticed that the, around town, the tennis courts, you know, those public tennis courts we see get a lot of traction. Maybe we do a lot more of those.
Actually, they do get a lot of use.
You know, I always see people there.
I think they're putting them in in the farm, too, aren't they? I know they're going to have people ball courts. I think tennis courts, too, that'll be available to the public.
I'm kind of curious to see what they do with that butterfly thing that they're talking about, the butterfly area.
You know, it, it depends on your point of view. Like there are some people that think it's wonderful and it's going to be special and it's going to have educational opportunities to bring in children and it's going to be a defining characteristic of the property. It's, and it should be wonderful, but there are other people that are cynical and thinking it's sort of a gimmick to help get the construction approved. But yeah, I think it's going to be fun to see how that plays out.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I mean, one thing that other cities do, you know, like if you go down to Point Loma and they have that, that area, that's almost like an indoor market. And I think that, you know, if we have things of that sort within Poway, you, you will attract people and they will purchase things from local businesses and you'll sort of get this influx of people coming to our city in order to see something that is well-designed, well-built, has a nice feel to it and want to just spend time with their kids, you know, outside of just the locals enjoying it as well.
Yeah, there's a lot that can be done to, you know, attract people to Poway for economic development and to make us a better place to live for those of us that are longtime residents. Hey, let's look at, geez, we're at an hour and a half. I want to just touch on two more things. So one is the city budget. And, you know, the city generally has been run rather well compared to a lot of other government agencies. They've saved money for rainy days. They, they balance their budget. They get great community input through the Budget Review Committee that I talked about. But, you know, expenses are rising much more aggressively than revenues. And they're going to get into a point where they're going to have to make some tough decisions on the budget. Have you looked at that yet and do you have any opinions?
I mean, I just, honestly, I'm, I'm really just getting into it now. But like I've mentioned before, just because I may not be a complete expert on it right now, doesn't mean I won't be, but also doesn't mean that I won't be looking into speaking with experts to get the, you know, create the right solution. But, but like you said, I mean, overall, so far, the, the city and probably due to the budgetary committee has been doing a good job with, with the city budget. But, you know, there may be things we can do to generate revenue outside of property taxes or other sort of taxes in order to create some money. Maybe even this committee with the Performing Arts Center starts generating more money than is needed to restore, upkeep the Performing Arts Center and you're getting some cash from that. There's other things that we could look into. But I think, I think you're right. Overall, it seems like things are becoming more and more expensive, especially in California. And I think that setting up our city to excel in that future would be, would be a very key topic for any new council member going in.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to be interesting because I think, you know, a huge percentage of the budget is employee expenses and, and those are going up and pension costs are going up. And the city's done some creative things to try to help manage pension costs. But yeah, they're, they're going to get to a point here soon where they're going to have to make some tough decisions.
Yeah, and I've been getting some pretty, I guess, a lot of opinions about what we could do for the budget. I mean, I had, I had someone suggest that we get rid of the sheriffs and do like a police department of Poway and people in the, in the community could, could, you know, volunteer. And now I've just been getting so many different opinions on what we could do for the future. But I think that's the question that I ask a lot of, you know, my neighbors is, you know, what, where do you see Poway in 20 years? And if, if you could control that, if you're playing, you know, SimCity, what would you do for Poway?
Right. Yeah, well, that's the tough thing is everyone's got their own idea, right? And, and then, but you as a city council member would have to make those judgment calls and try to represent your district to the best of your ability.
Yeah, and no, it's not easy. And I, and I think that's one of the things that we may need more of is that, that realization that as a council member, you know, you are the public's oversight on the city manager and the city attorney. And so you need to be out there talking to the public, getting their ideas, getting their opinions and, you know, having that open discourse instead of just being sort of a, you decide for the people.
Well, you know, Pete Neal just chimed in here. He said, the District Four population of record is 12,000 people. Those that are of voting age, 8,700. But the voter registration is only 5,900 and the voter turnout is only 3,000. So lots of interest. How are you going to get the gist of how 12,000 people feel if only 25% of them actually show up to vote?
Yeah, I mean, even if all 12,000 were voting, it'd be hard to get the gist of what everybody wants. And you're just going to have to do the best that you can getting everyone's opinions, either going door to door, having, you know, I think, I think Mayor Voss, when he was first running, was doing a good job of this. He was having these coffee sessions or whatever at the hamburger factory. And I, I think that's a good idea, having a public forum where people can come and have a direct connection to their council member, having their phone number widely available so that you can get phone calls from people to say, hey, you know, I'm concerned about this or that. But, I mean, there's only so much you can do. I mean, you're not going to be able to force people to register to vote, but I would highly recommend people out there that aren't registered to vote in Poway to register and have a voice within your city. I mean, you're now only having a voice in your district, so might as well vote.
That's where your vote can count the most, right?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, at the most local level, now we're at districts. It's very impactful compared to like a nationwide vote. Okay, this is like crazy off topic and this is my question, okay?
I thought you were going to ask me that rugby question, but I.
Well, okay, well, actually, how's the rugby program at Poway? Are there, there's a pretty good guys there? Both a men's and a women's program, right?
Yeah, so I, I mean, at least when I was coaching there, we had both boys and girls and we had JV and varsity for both. And we had coaches, there was four coaches that I hired in order to help me out with that. Currently, the head coach is Tom Constantine. And I think he did a great job of, the, the program isn't, you know, they're not like practicing or anything right now. So there's no current updates. I have a meeting that I'm going to join with them to probably come back and be an assistant coach because I'm doing a lot of other things. But, you know, just once you start playing rugby and you're in and out of the sport, it's hard to get out of it. It's almost like a cult. But yeah, I mean, when we were coaching them, it was a little bit difficult because a lot of students didn't know much about rugby. And so I think they were coming to the sport thinking that it was a pretty easy sport to do, to get a letter. And then they, they quickly realized that it's probably one of the toughest sports out there. And we had other students that were trying to do, you know, two hard sports, like wrestling and rugby or football and rugby. And it was a hard balance, but, you know, after, I think around the third year, I started getting students that they were there for rugby and it was pretty cool to see. And, and we were, you know, we were handedly starting to, to take out opponents. But I think the one thing about rugby is that a lot of kids are coming into it pretty fresh in high school. They don't have any like, you know, previous encounters with rugby. And so they're going against schools that have elementary schools that are playing rugby. And so the kids already know how to pass and tackle and they're really just doing plays. While for me, I had to teach them how to pass, how to tackle, just the concept of rugby. But there's a lot of outside things of rugby that, that teaches good lessons for kids, you know? Like no matter what happens on the field, it stays on the field. The, the host team always feeds the opposing team and you actually sit together and eat. You're, the, the teams will choose the MVP of the other team. The referee is called sir and is a judge and you never talk back to them. And we like to say you play the 16th man, there's 15 people on each team. The referee is the 16th man. So if he's against you, don't talk back. You just weren't, you need to be good enough to beat 16 men or women. And I think that is, I think those are really great lessons to teach, you know, kids that are developing into adulthood.
Yeah, sports provide so many wonderful opportunities for kids to learn about life and learn to be a teammate because you got to be a teammate, you know, at an adult level when you're in your career or relationships. So it's wonderful. And sports, it's such a big part of the community here, Poway. You know, not just rugby, but just about every sport, there's.
Yeah, especially wrestling.
Wrestling, and I mean, we go down the list. So is, is rugby a CIF or a club sport?
Right now it's, it's club. I mean, maybe one day will be CIF and we'll, we'll start to see it more and more within the school. I mean, especially when you're getting high rates of, of concussions within football. You know, rugby, you're still going to get some concussions, but it is less than football. The tackle is different. You don't use your helmet, you don't use your head, you don't shoulder charge. You have to wrap and it's very specific on how to do it. Also, I think most people understand you're not wearing pads, so you're going to have to be, you know, you have to be careful on how you're tackling. But the thing about rugby is it is a tough sport. I mean, it's 80 minutes long. You're doing defense and offense. It is pretty violent and aggressive. I mean, there's wrestling aspects of the game because the ball is always live. So you get a lot of cuts and bruises and, and maybe dislocated fingers and, and things like that, scars on your face like me. But I think it teaches you a lot of things. If, if, if that's the, the type of sport you're into, you can't beat rugby. And it's a team sport, so you got to work with your teammates and you got to learn how to, you know, to, I, I guess, do conflict resolution on, you know, within a team sport.
Hundred percent right.
Yeah.
That's awesome. I think that's great to hear, coach for rugby. And, and I, I think it's, yeah, it teaches so many great lessons. And it's fun, as I interviewed Jimmy Karam, who's running for school board in, in the South Poway area. And he's a football coach at Poway and we talked about football.
Oh, nice, yeah.
And so I just love that. I mean, the fact that you're deeply involved in the community, you know, with the, with the kids, with the sports program, that's wonderful. So I think that's fantastic.
I mean, now I'm coming back to it. So I, you know, like I had mentioned before, I took a break to play international rugby for, for Lebanon. But, you know, I was still living in Poway. I just traveled whenever I had to go, go play games.
So you had dual citizenship or something like that, right?
No, I actually, the International Rugby Union, the, the rules are if, if you've played for a, a country, like if I played for the US national team in an actual game, I wouldn't be able to play for any other country. But the rule is, you have to have at least your grandma be a citizen of that country. And so my mom is Lebanese. I'm out of Lebanon quite a bit. There's a big Lebanese community here in, in San Diego. We, we kind of situate around St. Ephraim Maranite Catholic Church. And, you know, I, I'm very involved in that community as well. I used to be the, the youth group president for a long time with my close friend Alex Jeez, who lives in North Poway, lives in District Two. But yeah, I mean, I think, I think it was, it was an interesting experience and it was an adventure having two jobs. You know, you, you, you sit most of your week in a, in a lab, you're trying to create experiments and, and figure out, you know, answers to certain questions within sort of a certain drug modality. And then the next thing you know, you're traveling with an international rugby team, you're signing autographs and taking photos with people and, and then you're back in the lab.
Yeah, yeah, that's like Clark Kent and Superman, right? So yeah, two identities. So I, I got to ask you this question because, you know, you, you work in, in, in pharma. You work, you said immunology and vaccines. I mean, what's your take on the whole COVID thing? Are we going to have a, a vaccine here at some point? What do you think's going to happen?
Oh, yeah, probably. I mean, this is always a hot topic. Everything becomes so political. No matter what I say, I'm going to upset 50%, 51% of the population. But, I mean, the, the truth is vaccines are very expensive and they're not always the most effective. I mean, we have the flu vaccine and it really is 10% effective or so per year. So if you're out there thinking that this vaccine is going to be the cure of, of COVID and 100% effectiveness and we're going to go back to normal, you're, I'm sorry to disappoint you. Vaccines also take quite a long time to develop. So it could be a long time before we see a really effective vaccine. I think antivirals are a lot easier to produce and, and could be equally effective, especially for the short term and it takes a lot less to develop. But I think COVID is going to be one of those things like the flu where you're going to see it every year or you're going to see it just within our population. It's going to be something that we just need to learn to accept. But luckily, more and more data is coming out. I know it was very scary when it first came out, but like we've said before, knowledge is power. And we're starting to understand this thing a lot more and we're starting to realize that it's not as scary as we initially thought. And I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll see, hopefully we'll see things go back to normal if our politicians can stop bickering and, and, you know, choosing the worst things for us and just solve a problem.
And that's what you want to do. You want to be a problem solver, a, a conflict resolution guy, right?
Yeah, we, we talked, I think before the show started, but I, I just think that it's, it's a sad place to be in within our society where we just attack each other versus solving the problem, you know? And we need to get back to that, you know, like any topic, abortion, whatever. It is a social problem we need to solve. We'll have two different perspectives, but we need to solve the problem, not go at each other because I have this perceived, you know, level of, of good behavior and I'm, I'm, I'm good and you're evil because I'm right and you're wrong. I know the truth and you don't, you know? I don't think that's the way to go at it. I, I, I finally figured out that I can see the comments coming in. I was wondering. And I thought John Carson, Mr. Carson is talking about whether or not, he needs to verify whether or not I'm an LA Dodger fan?
Dodger fan, that's how we speak about the Dodgers.
That's funny. You know, I, I like the Padres, even though I watch baseball. I think, I mostly go to baseball games to, to eat hot dogs and get away with it. You know, I always get critique for, especially in my family, how much I eat. And so I get to go away, drink some beers and have some hot dogs, but baseball is not really my thing. I like.
Rugby guy, yeah.
Yeah, I like, I like rugby, especially when you're at the international, international and professional level, you seem to only be, you know, focused on your sport. But I, I like to watch sports that don't have mini games in between innings. I like things like UFC.
Okay.
Or things like that really are boxing I, I'm big into. But if I were to be a fan of any baseball team, it would be the, you know, it would be the Padres.
Okay, okay.
Also, it's a cool jersey.
Yeah, they, yeah, bring back the brown.
Yeah, I like, I like, I like the, I also like the camo one. I mean, the camo one is cool.
Well, yeah, they wear those on.
Hi, Mr. Carson. Yeah, I got to convert you to, yeah, you said not a baseball fan, get out of here. Well, I'm going to get you, we'll go to a rugby game one day and you'll, you'll never look back. There's a, a San Diego professional team, by the way, in Major League Rugby. It's the second year, probably third now because they probably had to take a break because of COVID. But we have the San Diego Legion and they're based out of USD. They play out of that stadium. But they have some pretty amazing players that are former all-black players. So the All Blacks is the New Zealand national team and they're number one in the world. And there's some, you know, former All Blacks that now play for San Diego. So I know San Diego probably doesn't realize it, but they have some, you know, Hall of Famers rugby-wise within the, within the team.
You know, it was, I think it was like four, five years ago at Petco Park.
Yeah.
A five on five or was it?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah, seven on seven. Yeah, I loved it. Yeah, so sevens is, is rugby has a lot of different formats. There's rugby union, which is what I am accustomed to playing and it's 15 on 15 and there's no downs and, and it's a, a, a live sport. And then there's something called Rugby League and it's mostly played in Australia and there's 13 people on each side. And it's probably like, if you're talking about the evolution of American football, it goes rugby union, league, and then American football. League has downs. And you see the tackles that are similar to what we see in American football. And then there's something called sevens, rugby sevens, and it's an Olympic sport. And it's just like rugby union, the 15-person game, but only played with seven, same size field. It's very exciting because there's a lot more tackles, there's a lot more running, there's a lot more scoring. And we used to do it in San Diego at Petco Park. And then they moved, moved it to Las Vegas. So it's now the Las Vegas sevens and it's on the circuit for the Olympics. So you have to win a certain amount of points throughout the year or four years to then get invited to go to the Olympics.
Nice. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great sport. I might only had limited exposure to it. There's a guy that I know here in Poway that's a big rugby guy. His name's Greg Herman. And I've learned a lot through him.
Yeah, well, it'd be great to meet him. There's, I mean, or have him come out and support the Poway High School Rugby Program. You know what, what's a, 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 a cool little fact is that the, the US actually used to be the Rugby Sevens gold medalists before the last Olympics, which was not funny.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you would expect that would be, you know, New Zealand or Australia or South Africa, not America.
There was US and it was like a college team, too, which was pretty cool. Yeah, I mean, I think just because of the size of our country and we have so much diversity and mixing that, I mean, I think the potential to probably win at every sport, depending on how much recognition it gets. And so, I mean, I, I think a few years ago rugby was the fastest growing sport in America. I'm not sure if it is still, but if, if we continue on that path and, and Major League Rugby starts getting a lot more popular and you see on ESPN, maybe we'll go back to getting gold medals.
That'd be great. I mean, already, you know, soccer is getting more and more traction in America.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
You know, so I think especially with, you know, all the channels we have available to us, we're getting more and more exposure to all these sports. So yeah, bring on rugby, man. Let's, let's do it.
Yeah, for sure.
Hey, so let's get back to Poway. I, I had a whole like list of questions here.
Oh, wow.
Did we leave anything out? I mean, what else do you have to say before we wrap this up? It's important that you want to share with the people of Poway.
I mean, nothing that I haven't said before, but I can say this was very enjoyable. So in the future, if any future candidates are running, I highly suggest coming on to the podcast or just coming on to talk about baseball or, or whatever, a lot of fun. But no, I think for, for this election, you know, I just wish everyone good luck in, in their, in their campaign. um, you know, I just wish everyone, uh, good luck in in their, uh, in their campaigns. And if you're out there and you're still undecided, give me a call or go on my website or listen to this podcast, but, um, you know, I I am excited to, uh, be a part of the city council and and give back to the community and be the voice that the, uh, the residents need.
Right on. So what is your website address again?
It's, uh, Fournier for Poway. So the number four, but you know, Fournier for Poway dot com.
Okay, so I'll include that in the show notes. Um, so this, this recording is 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 on Facebook and YouTube. It'll be retained there as a recording. I'll get this posted on all the popular audio only podcast platforms like
Nice.
Pitcher and Spotify and Apple Podcasts. And I mean, the whole, there's like 10 of them that we're on. So that'll probably get posted later tonight or tomorrow. Um, and, um, I wish you fantastic luck in this race. Um, I think we had a great conversation. Hopefully the voters get a chance to know you. Um, but I I wish you nothing but success.
Thank you. John, real quick before we go, I had a question. Now that Joe Rogan has moved on to Spotify, how do you feel about that, being a podcaster?
Dude signed like, what was it, a hundred billion dollars or was it a hundred million, a hundred million?
I don't know. It was an insane amount of money. I know that.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to monetize this podcast and right now it's just a glorified hobby. So
Yeah.
Yeah. So that gives me hope, you know, I have someone to aspire to.
Yeah, no, for sure. But I mean, invite some controversial people on, get those views up.
Well, yeah, we could, you know, and we, when we, I started this in the fall of 2018 and we interviewed candidates for mayor and city council and school board here in Poway. And I designed the, you know, the the layout of the studio in the beginning like Rogan, where we had a long table and we were on
Oh, nice. Yeah.
Um, but then with COVID, you know, we have to do it like this, you know, rather than in person. But yeah, I mean, Rogan has been so successful and yeah, it's aspirational for me. So something, yeah, I I need to bring in some some controversial candidates that'll shake it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I'll tell you what, I get great, um, uh, downloads and views and minutes viewed from these podcasts with political candidates. There are some of the best ones that I do in terms of the analytics. So that's why I love having candidates on here because it's good for my podcast. But it's also good for the candidate to get your word out because where else are you going to be able to spend nearly two hours and talking about the issues? And then, and then for the listeners and viewers, and they get to really know you. And they get to see what makes you tick and they get to understand your character more so than just a few bullet points on your website. So this is
No, definitely. And and that's what's important in in politics. I I think that, uh, you know, the parties sort of get carried away. And I think what's important is the individual and 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 who you're choosing to to vote for. Uh, but it's kind of good to see how much, um, you know, how many, how many, how active power residents are, you know, paying attention to what's happening around them. I know I can't tell you, everyone I've I've talked to, they all read the chieftain, uh, and 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 everyone knew who you were. So I I think that's, uh, that's, that's great.
Yeah, there's some people in town that are really, really into following the details of our city government. And there are other people that just, they're very busy and they have lives and they don't, they trust the city council members to manage it to the best of their ability. And I'm sure a lot of voters will be looking to you to do that.
No, for sure. I mean, I think I've been told it's called the Poway Political Circuit. And and you know, you'll start to see this, the same faces and voices.
Yes, it is. Uh, yeah, that's part of what makes Poway special. So, oh, good. Well, Frank, thanks very much. This has been, this has been awesome.
Thank you. I appreciate you, uh, inviting me on here.
Okay. All right, we're gonna wrap it up, but thanks again, Frank. We'll take care.
Sounds good. You too.